Folks, we're going to get started on Public Engagement Committee update. I don't know that there's necessarily anything to put on the screen, but let's just go ahead for grins. So, we had our Public Engagement Committee meeting this morning. I actually don't see on the -- oh, no, we have the debrief of the Ed Summit. I'm going to take Chair Liberty and move that up to number one because I think there's -- we always share good news first. So, from the post-mortem, talk about -- we've got lots of bad, 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 bad stuff that we're talking about using bad titles. We've got to come up with better acronyms and stuffs. Child cohort survival, that's another one we need to work on. But one of the things that I asked DCCO to do was kind of do an analysis, and we had talked, if you recall, at our last work session about having some method of tracking during the registration process so that we could find out who's coming to the Ed Summit. You know, I was starting to worry that maybe we're, you know, we're all trying to be conscientious of staff time, whether we were doing this and having 50 percent of staff turn up at the event, and what the fallout was. Now, we had the tremendous good luck for that to be one of the most exquisite days on the calendar. So, there was a fair amount of drop-off. But if you want to, if you wouldn't mind Marty, just going over some of these top-down stats and sharing the good news of what came out of your analysis?
Sure, sure. And from that analysis, first of all, I have to introduce Kathleen Thomas, who's at the table today. She's our Director for Strategic Communications in DCCO, and she's taking on a few more responsibilities until we are able to find a replacement for Barbara Hunter. So, in looking at the 2014 Ed Summit results, we had about 820 registered attendees for the event with 402 confirmed attendees attending that day. Majority of those, I believe it was about 85 percent from our calculations this morning, were parents. 341 with -- we had other business individuals there, college and university, one college and university official, and we had some students. And then around 32 participants who were either general FCPS employees, grandparents, guardians, et cetera. There were 26 breakout sessions with 20 exhibitors. And I think that we were most happy about the results on the post-summit survey. We had 83 responses on the post-summit survey, with 89 percent of those attending saying that the summit met or exceeded their expectations. 84 percent said that the alumni panel from the day was valuable or very valuable. 73 percent said that it met the objective for the day. And lastly, 89 percent said that they would attend another education summit, which was a 7 percent increase over the previous year. So, I say kudos to DCCO for planning a very successful education summit.
One of the things that we talked about is, leading up to it, I'd gotten some of the attendance numbers for the several prior years. And congratulations, Karen, you were the high-water mark on your first year. I think there were like almost 1,000 participants. There was like 990. But in the years previous to that, we were kind of generally in the 600s. And so, I was concerned about the 402, and so that's why we asked about the breakout. But to know that out of the 400 that came, basically 350 were parents, means that we are reaching into the parent community. So, some of the things that we talked about during the Public Engagement work session was how to, one, start planning for next year now. And one of the things that Kathleen and Marty and the committee members and I talked about was that we were kind of a little bit late to the mark in getting a sponsor this year. And that sometimes, you know, maybe some of the opportunities that we could capitalize on in terms of marketing, in terms of getting the word out with a sponsor onboard earlier, would benefit, you know, the advertisement route. So, I think that it's reasonable to say that it should be the goal of staff to have a sponsor 90 days in advance. And that gives us time to put together, you know, the materials, work within the community about, you know, what it is, which is the topic of the upcoming Ed Summit, and, you know, just capitalize on, you know, other channels of marketing to get the word out. So, I think that's a beneficial assessment. The other thing is the question of, and Sandy had kind of done a walk-around, and there were some kind of, not scientific analytics, but a review of the more-attended breakout sessions. And that if there are, from a public engagement perspective, if there are some very salient breakout sessions that would be good in a specific community, like in a pyramid, redeploy those. Because, as Marty had suggested, the material's already created. The staff is already ready to go with those. So, if a PTA, or if a school community, or if a school board member would like to take advantage of that, you know, first of all, the materials are posted, and second of all, you start to meet people where they are. There was a question about, are we getting, are we reaching all demographics with the education summit? Food is a biggie. I do suggest finding somebody to get us even more food next time. The question was too around, is a half-day on a Saturday just too much to ask? My experience in talking to parents that day was actually that they were, they didn't want to leave. You know, they were hanging around and sucking us dry for whatever information. And so, I don't know how you do this effectively if you don't do it in a half-day, and then when do you do it? Do you do it on a Sunday? That's not going to work. So, that's just, it's a question of, you know, if people are committed and they're going to come, they're going to come on a Saturday more than any other day. So, the other thing that we contemplated was finding a way to offer continuing education credits to teachers to potentially come and act as tutors on that day, or have service hours for teens to come and provide crafts or some kind of alternate activities for younger children, and then start to treat it like a real wraparound event. So, I'm just wondering if anybody has any comments about the Ed Summit, things they like to share. Kathy?
I just had a question you referenced in the beginning, and I know I had asked this. Do we know what areas of the county people came from?
We did collect what schools. I haven't analyzed all of it, but we did ask what schools their students attend, so we will have that information.
So, that will be provided to the Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Just building upon that, and my colleague from the lead district won't be happy with me, but I do think having it in the same school two straight years could have potentially contributed to that downward trend in attendance. So, we should work to get it elsewhere in coming years.
We actually just, we tried very hard not to do that this year.
Right.
Just, I just wanted to share, we worked with school schedules, and it was profoundly difficult. But the plan is already with DCCO staff to look at moving it around for next year, so I appreciate that. Dan?
I think it's a wonderful summit, and I'm pleased to hear the parent participation, but I just, the, we're clearly heading in the right direction, so I'm, again, very, very pleased. But I want to also acknowledge part of the, this original vision that I had, and I think, I think Kathy will share this as well, that we had, when we really kind of pushed to create this, was that we wanted this to be something a little bit more than just a school kind of event. We wanted to have it be a community-wide event. It's difficult to do, and, but it was intended to try to get the broader community that the 80 percent or 75 percent of the community doesn't have kids in school to be connected to education and learning and educational issues, and to try to help them learn or understand better about the broader trends in education, and try to bring them into the conversation. I know that's incredibly difficult, so I'm not here to say, you know, it's easy to do. I'm just, I would like us to still keep that in the forefront of trying to make sure that this is not just, if you will, a school system summit, but a broader county-wide summit. And if there's some way or other we can improve upon that and make some difference in that, I would welcome that. Again, I don't have any brilliant ideas. I'm just, to me, that's just a core part of the power of this. Because we have other summits that we do that are more directed specifically to parents, and this is one that we really have an opportunity to kind of change that dynamic a little bit. So, maybe, maybe there needs to be more of a dialogue with the --
Well, I will say that definitely in the buildup towards this Ed Summit, that was, that intention was never expressed nor integrated really into the notion. The question was, in what way, which we haven't met the needs by previous Ed Summits, could we, and it was really more looking within FCPS than what we have to offer, and how we can effectively get different kinds of communication and information to more parents. So, if there is a desire for the next Ed Summit to have a different twist or intention, then the Board just needs to tell us.
Exactly. The theme for this year's summit was Resources for Parents, and so that, the emails and communications were directed toward parents. But we do have the library patron list that we can utilize for any kinds of communications we want to talk with the greater community. So, if we think about the theme for next year and then expand upon that theme, it might be engaging the greater community.
I think it's, historically, that's always going to be our challenge, and I'm, again, we've, I love what we're doing. I just would like to see if there's some way we can increase the audience beyond schools themselves, because I think in the end, that's part of our, their understanding about fundraising and why we ask for, the funds that we ask for for education. But more importantly is, these broader trends, you know, whether it's the Common Core, or it's the things that we're doing with the international, the international assessments, et cetera. I think if we can get people to think more broadly, and maybe it's lifelong learning. Maybe it is more community college stuff, maybe we partner with them. I don't know, but I'm just, again, the idea was to try to make it a broader conversation. So, I'm, anything that can be done along those lines to?
Great. Sounds like you're building your list of suggested Ed Summit topics, so just start writing them down, because we'll start planning next year already.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Stork? Chaney, and then Megan?
Just in response to Mr. Stork's suggestion, it's very hard to get the non-school people out. But I know, Dr. Garza, your list of listening tours, which will be very interesting to see how that, how that one works. The other piece that we might want to think of over time, but it becomes very labor-intensive. If you want community people, you need to go to them. And it may be doing some interesting programs, dog and pony shows, brown bag lunches at some of the larger employers, going to some of the very large churches, and to offer it in their space, and say you want to learn more about schools, and maybe it becomes our students putting on, our high school students, very articulate, wonderful high school students, talking about what they are preparing for in life. That would be a whole different thing. But going to large companies, going to large churches, going to Greenspring, you know, I think, and then inviting our students to help plan it for a 30-minute whatever, that would be very different than a summit, but that may be one way to go out into the community.
And it sounds like, if I, if I'm hearing both of you, it's a little bit what Dr. Garza's headed to with, with the roundtables. And we may find that the roundtables may morph into your desired outcome, Mr. Stork.
I think the key difference was that the summit was supposed to, again, my original concept at least was that it's about a broader educational theme, so.
Ms. McGlocklin, then Ms. Sternek, Kofax.
So, I apologize for stepping out if what I'm going to ask was already covered, but I've shared this for a couple of years now, that I think this is incredibly well-intentioned, but we can not continue to tax our staff. And we already run every year some incredible educational summits on a variety of issues that we know draw thousands of people each time we do them. And so, it worries me that this is, I think, now the fourth year we've done this, and I, I really don't want to put Dr. Garza on the spot, but maybe just plant a seed, that something I'd said in a prior work session, I'm not sure I think that this is the right thing to do to staff in terms of workload and in terms of the outcome. It's a very busy time of year. They're trying to, you know, prepare, to build a budget, and meet with the Board supervisors in our joint board meeting. There's just a lot that goes on, and you talk about all these individual breakout sessions and the amount of staff time it takes to develop these breakout sessions. So, I guess my question to Dr. Garza and/or Marty Smith is, looking at this from the administrative standpoint, not the lens of the school board that likes this in concept, but from the lens of delivery and operational, you know, what percentage of the sessions were full, or did staff say, "Yeah, I had a total of three people sitting in on my session, and, you know, it was a lot of work, and, you know, I'm not really sure that I needed to be doing this." I just haven't heard that we've done sort of that post-mortem look and said, "Yes, it's all really well and good, but is this the right thing to keep doing?" And I just don't know, I don't know, Mr. Smith, if you feel comfortable talking to it, or Dr. Garza, but I really do think that needs to happen at this point. We've done it for four years in a row, and I think it's important that that assessment really happened. And I think for the Board to have a sense of, here are all the different summits we do in the course of a year, and what's been the benefit of keeping this one going. And I'd love to hear if the rest of, I mean, I think we as a Board need to know that before we can all say this is really great. It doesn't take, put more work on our plates, quite honestly, to do this, but it puts a huge amount of work on the plates of the Superintendent and her team.
So, Ms. McGlocklin, let me just say, one of the things that we talked about was with that redeployment, was so that it wasn't a one-and-done with those sessions, and that of the sessions that were found to be most helpful or most beneficial was redeploying those. I will say that the West Springfield Pyramid Counseling Team did a parent university. And just, just for perspective, so this is a single pyramid, they had, I think, between 160 Dr. Doc or 160, 180 parents come for one pyramid. So, I'm just, you know, meeting people where they are, you know, gets turnout. And so, it's just something to think about. I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Dr. Garza?
I do think it's a worthwhile question, you know? I don't know that I necessarily have an answer. You know, we serve at the will of the Board. This was a Board Directive, you know, priority of the Board, and I think it's certainly something we all concern ourselves with, and that is, how do we engage this community? Is this the right, is this one, is this one right thing to do? I don't know. I do think it does take a lot of time and energy from our staff, no doubt. I think when we ask sponsors, you know, we're asking them to give money towards something, is this, is this something that we consider a high priority? I think it's a very worthwhile question. I don't know that we necessarily have the numbers per session. Do you, do you all have those?
Well, we had some really wonderful students from Edison who volunteered for us that day, and they actually went around the hallways and kind of did a head count in each of the sessions. So, it's not a scientific, perfect count, but we do know which sessions were really well-attended and which ones weren't as well-attended.
Okay, so you all will be giving that to our PEC committee? Okay.
But is it possible that even if we were to send an email out to all of the presenters and said, "Was your session well-attended?", you know, we approximate how many people you felt were there, and that you saw it beneficial to, for the amount of work you put into it, to the audience you spoke to? I mean, I just, I really appreciate that you're saying you guys serve at the will of the Board, but this is a partnership, and we've always said that we, we need you to feel comfortable to communicate back to us, that if, when you look at all the really great summits that happen throughout the school year, if this is the one that really kind of just taxes it at the end, then maybe it's just not the one we keep doing.
PEC will stay on top of it with DCCO and Superintendent, okay? We'll, we'll keep, we'll make sure the analytics get out. But, I mean, 26 breakout sessions and 402 people, the max, I mean, on an average, you would have is 15 people per?
So, the, so when I stepped out of the room, you mentioned it was 400 and what?
402 attendees.
Oh, all right, even more, please, Dr. Garza. We usually draw over 1,000, 2,000 people. This is not the one.
I'm keeping us on schedule, moving along. Ms. Sternek, Kofax, and Ms. Evans?
I'm going to speak in dissent to my last colleagues who just spoke. I think the fact, you know, you said meeting people where they are, and I know Ms. Smith had it, and I agree. So, Ryan, it shouldn't always be at the same place. I get that. But just think, if it was even just from this area, and we had three, nearly 400 people who were there, who rated, who were 89 percent of these people rated it, this is something that was extremely valuable to us. So, I think the metrics about where, where the people come from is important, and, but if you're servicing one area based upon where we chose to have it, and it's a high percentage of people you want to engage in another time, and like you did say, Elizabeth, that you stayed there till the end, as did I, and people couldn't thank us enough, those who attended, those who engaged, couldn't thank us enough. So, it is, but it is a board discussion. It is something that we do, not so much staff. This was ours, this was Mr. Stork's baby, and we have tried to enhance it. Mr. Stork, if you do recall though, when I sat on PEC, one of the things that we noticed, the overall attendance was going down when we were trying to reach the broader community. So, we kind of re-engaged and went back to school-specific, looking at our primary target, who is our parent, grandparent audience, you know, guardian audience, and the attendance did start to go back up. So, now, now we're plateauing again, and I think public engagement should look at it. But I definitely want to say, for those three, 341 parents who were there, they were engaged, they were active, they were happy. The results show us that. So, I don't think it should be something we should just randomly check off. I think there should be further analysis, and let's see, and go forward.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
I think this is a valuable event. It's, it's an opportunity. I see it as akin to what we do in August with the FCPS leaders, where everybody comes together and we hear about what's, what's new and what's on the horizon for the school system. And I see this as an opportunity for the Superintendent to do the same thing with a broad group of parents, primarily parents, but parents and other community members, to come here and hear, you know, this year it was portrait of the graduate, next year I would think it would be the strategic plan. You know, that's a major initiative. So, I think it does have a value. We need to be thinking about how to draw as many people as we can with the location. Now, I had more concerns about the breakout session, and I did, and I can send that around. I actually went to each one and looked at how many people were in each one. And some of them were very lightly attended. The largest one, I believe, I saw was maybe 30 or 35 people, which was fine. So, my advocacy would be to look at the breakout sessions and see if we couldn't pinpoint and maybe combine some to make, to give us more bang for the buck from the breakout section, sessions, as opposed to having only one or two people. And I think then we would kind of get the best of both worlds, is my feeling on that.
Okay, anybody else? Because I have some other items we've got to get to here. Okay, we're going to upend it completely. We're going to go to the Faith and Community Outreach Breakfast, which is something that we began with the previous, the plans to propose with the previous PEC Committee. And we have come up with a plan for two potential dates, which in the, between the time of our PEC Committee meeting this morning and now, has kind of come down to about one. So, you have a choice of one date.
This is for?
I would like it, I would like it.
Or another month?
For the faith-based. So, we had originally selected a Tuesday and a Wednesday, early December. We figured before December gets away from us too much, and we had selected Tuesday, December 2nd, and Wednesday, December 10th. In the intervening time, we found out that we do a substitute, a substitute orientation on Wednesday, December 10th. So, what we're suggesting is on Tuesday, December 2nd, for anybody who's been to Common Grounds, treat this like a Common Grounds event in Gatehouse Cafe, so we don't have, we're not going to fight for parking, and we can advertise it in advance. Have it be a meet and greet like Common Grounds. Do registration from 8:00 to 8:30. Have Dr. Garza and the Chair give opening remarks. And then, because, again, meeting the needs of the community is kind of geographically based for many of these organizations, based on either where they're located or where they're trying to outreach, is to familiarize them with our concept of regions, and have maps of all the regions, and have us, you know, set that out so that they can go and see where their schools are, where their pyramids are, meet Board members who could move by and amongst and between the regions they represent, along with the Regional Assistant Superintendents. And then just really have that opportunity to engage during that, and then I could deliver some closing remarks, you know, have coffee, have snacks by Gatehouse or whatever. So, I'm just wondering, you know, what people think, and if they would be willing to vote for the one and only choice of Tuesday, December 2nd? And would you, as Board members, come if we provided you the opportunity to come first thing in the morning? Registration 8:00 to 8:30, and have it be one hour, 8:30 to 9:30. Yes? A sense of, a sense of the Board? Done, love it. Okay, moving right along. Budget Communication Plan, we didn't talk about it today. It wasn't on our plan. We're going to get to it next time. We have a draft, but could you talk about the draft that we did, we don't, that we don't have? The draft that we have but don't have?
Yes, so the draft of the Communication Plan for the Budget, we have several pieces that we've already implemented at this time. The Citizens' Guide to the Budget's already been published. We have the Bottom Line Newsletter, which has, we've had one of those newsletters has already gone out to the community. We've just developed some talking points for the Board that were reviewed this morning by Susan Quinn and by myself, and well, Dr. Garza will be taking a look at those at Cabinet tomorrow, and once we get those signed off, we'll be pushing those talking points out to all Board members. We've broken it down so that this year you'll have on one side of the talking points, a focus on the budget strategy, and then the backside of the talking points gives the, sort of, the facts, the facts and breakdowns for Fairfax County Schools. So, we would like to get that out as soon as possible to the Board.
And our Budget Chair and Vice Chair have also seen those and kind of been helping us with those along the way, too, so I wanted to know.
Right. I was going to, I was going to ask Ms. Reed first if she had any comments about those budget notes. No? Okay, Ms. Hines?
Well, I was just wondering, does it make sense for the whole Board to see a draft before, I mean, are these things that we're going to be printing out in large number and spending money on printing? Because I wonder if it would make sense then for the Board to see them before they're printed? I mean, I think like the Citizens' Guide I mean, I think like the Citizens' Guide to the Budget is great, but there are a couple pages in there that I, I think, and Dan, you and I talked about one, where if I'd seen it ahead of time, I might have asked for a slightly, a different, but, so I don't know, maybe it's not necessary in this case.
So, these talking points are really just for Board purposes? They're not printed, and they're not shared with the community? It's simply for you to use when you're talking with constituents, and we could also then pass that along to our administrators in the district?
But there isn't the intention necessary to have that as a handout. That is just as a working document for us to facilitate. So, Ms. Hines, if, what I'm sensing is, is that you might want some different things in yours, because you and I had emailed about maybe having some, you know, five-by-eight cards to use to facilitate conversations.
Yeah, so, I mean, that is kind of what I was thinking, and maybe, that would be a next, you know, step for that. So, that, this works for me, I think. I'll take a look at the talking points and then say, well, maybe there's a, there's a bulleted, a list here that I wouldn't mind just putting on cards when I go out to talk to people, but that can be a next step, that's, you know...
Ms. Reed?
I think the intention was, though, to make sure that we were all consistent in our messaging, right? So, if we want to use that internally, then we still might want to create something that we could all pass out in PTA meetings, or to stakeholders who also may want to articulate some information on our behalf. So, maybe that's just, as you say, kind of another thing that maybe, it's a subset, perhaps, of what's already been written down. And that, then I think we probably should get all the Board members to agree if we're all going to be articulating those points.
Well, and that's, that's where the, there is somewhat of a nexus still, and that's why it's on our next PEC Committee Plan, is the nexus of where it moves out of budget and into public engagement. And I do see that if the desire of the Board is to create a handout for Board members to engage PTAs or community members or civic associations, and you really want that, as opposed to working notes, that you, that you, it's part of our next, and then some. Anything else? Because I'm going to end my work session early and catch us up once again. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to, we're going to take a two-minute break and move on to audit.